Call the meeting to order. Will you please stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Councilman Eric Schein.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this wonderful evening, Lord. We just thank you for the spring weather. We just recognize that you are bringing everything back and making everything beautiful again. And, Lord, we just thank you so much for that. We just ask you to be with us this evening as we make any decisions pertaining to the city and just give us leadership. In your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Here.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
You do have a quorum.
Next item is a consent agenda, excuse me, which contains Lowell City Council minutes and the regular meeting of March 16, 2010. If there's no question, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
President.
Are you abstaining?
I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Keith Williams.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Next item is a public forum. Excuse me. Anyone wishing to make statements to the city council may do so now. Next item is new business and ordinance amending the city of Lowell Code of Ordinances, Section 8-102, by rezoning certain lands from light industrial to commercial.
Thank you. This came before the planning commission comes with a, it passed with a recommend from them. Basically what it is, is this is, does everybody know where Aztec Tile is, was? The Aztec Tile building was tire central before that, the corner of Jane Place and 71B? Okay. That property, the way, whenever they rezoned it years ago, they made it half industrial and half commercial. And the people that are purchasing this land want to put a church on it. To do a church, you have to be in commercial. You can't do that in light industrial. So they have asked to change the whole property, about five acres, and make it commercial.
Are they going to add more parking over there?
You know, they haven't done a large scale yet, so I couldn't tell you what they're gonna add.
Have they already purchased the property?
No, this is one of the contingencies of them buying it, was that they wanted to make sure they could get it changed. It's under contract.
They will be subjected to the fees for improving the lines through there, correct?
I think that all depends on if the ordinance for the sewer passes later tonight and they hook to it.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on third and final reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
An ordinance amending the city of Lowell Code of Ordinances, Section 8-102, by rezoning certain lands from light industrial to commercial. Any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
This will be ordinance number 868.
Next item is an ordinance to rescind ordinance number 204 and ordinance number 858 and to amend the city of Lowell Code of Ordinances, Section 24, Article 2, Park Rules, Section 24-19, Section 2420, and Section 2421, and for other purposes.
Did anyone have any questions on this? Why are we changing it? We wanted to, we have to make the time, the time was listed two different times in our code. It was 10 to 7 and 10 to 6, and we had to fix that. We wanted no motorized vehicles except for, except for the authorized city equipment. We had some other things. One was the fishing activities, and that would be a catch and release, fishing only. I think when we did ordinance 858, they wrote in the Code of Ordinances that, let's see, we save what this says exactly, that it was adopted and did not specifically amend the code. So we wanted to amend the code to include those items that was on 858. So we're taking, what we did was removed everything that was in there and rewrote the ordinance to include all of that with those few minor changes I just stated.
Mary, I have a question. In the past, we've used motorized vehicles in Wardnell Park. We had car shows for the Mudtown days. We pull vehicles through there, parking trailers, and those are not parked vehicles. Would we need a clause in there that says unless otherwise specified?
This is the way I was told, just to say authorized city. So I think we could, under that, say that the city authorized that. I mean, that would be up to you guys, if you want to say something different.
Tom, would we need to do that?
Authorized, it says the use of authorized city equipment will be allowed. And also, it says, within the boundaries of the city parks, excepting designated parking areas. So that maybe covers everything that we would need there. In the ordinance that's in the book is 856, 858, right? 858 and an old one dated 204. I noticed the one in the book, the way the vehicle part was written, you couldn't ride bikes in the park. You can't ride bikes? Bicycles, yeah. Yeah, the old, yeah, the old one.
The old one, 204.
The old one said that. I was breaking law every time I took the grandkids up there. And also, in that ordinance, it mentions league play in reference to the time that you can be in the park. Yeah, I think that our leagues are all, are mostly scheduled to be done at 10:00 PM. I think that's why that's that way. It's the way it's always been, except for league play, so, I mean, I don't think league play goes past 10.
You look to me to answer your question, don't you?
Yes.
Right. As I read it, there'll be no motorized vehicles of any kind in the park unless it's a city vehicle.
No.
Actually, city equipment, no?
Except in designated parking areas.
Right, if it's parked in a parking lot. So do the cars go up in the grass or do they just stay in the parking lot when you're in a car show?
On the car show, we've had it in the grass, and we also have vendor booths that set up in the grass as well.
Well, without a vendor booth is a motorized vehicle, although to get it there, you probably have to drag it up there.
Right.
You know, you could, you could write around that and say, except for authorized car shows, or except for, you know, I think what you're trying to do, though, is get the message out that you don't want, you don't want people driving on the grass.
Right, I just.
So.
I want to make sure when we pass this, that's what we needed to say.
Let me ask you this. When there's a car show, does it need a permit, Mary? Do they, do we know they're coming?
No, on Mudtown, though, we do set aside the designated areas for different things.
So it's in Mudtown days is when they do it? So we know they're gonna be there.
Yeah.
And then the same with the booths, they don't just show up when they want to, right?
Right.
So in other words, the police department will probably know, Eric, when these things are gonna happen, and I doubt this is gonna get misapplied, you know? I doubt that someone who needs to be there is gonna get stopped. And the way Mary has it written is gonna definitely get the message across, don't drive on the grass, you know? So probably it'll work just fine the way it is.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first and final reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
An ordinance to rescind ordinance number 204 and ordinance number 858 and to amend the city of Lowell Code of Ordinances, Section 24, Article 2, Park Rules, Section 24-19, Section 24-20, and Sections 2421, and for other purposes. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
This will be ordinance number 869.
I'll entertain a motion to enact the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
The emergency clause is enacted.
Next item is an ordinance amending the city of Lowell Land Development Code Schedule of Uses.
The first, the first things I want to deal with are the truck and tractor repair and the trailer repair. We took this to the commission last night, and we were talking about it, and I'll be honest, when I first saw that it wasn't permitted in there, and everyone that I've talked to about it remembers that maybe this was changed to permitted. And in fact, Selena had an old book last night that showed it as permitted in that. And I don't know if it got mixed up with the codification or, you know, what the problem was, but I thought it was safer to go ahead and bring it before you all tonight to change those two uses, the truck and tractor repair and the trailer repair, to permitted in light industrial from conditional. And like I say, the way I gauged the planning commission last night was that they didn't, there weren't any problems. What they were more concerned about was that we had it, we had it changed in one book and not in the other, so this would even it out. So that would be the first thing I would ask for, for those to be changed. Is it for ordinance? No, I thought it would just be, should I ask for all three and then? One, okay, okay. I was just thinking on the use chart, I didn't know if you could. Are you messing with me? No.
He hasn't seen the ordinance.
Okay, and then on miniature golf, last night, we brought that, we brought that to the planning commission to ask that it be changed to a permitted use in RO, and they are sending a recommendation of conditional use to you all in residential, I'm sorry, retail office. But I am, the staff is going to ask you all to pass that as a permitted use.
What was their concern?
Their concern was that if it could be used as a buffer to a neighborhood, they were concerned about that.
So Mike, you think that at the truck and tractor repair and trailer repair, you think that's already permitted use? Or is it conditional?
It's already permitted in some, in one codebook, it's conditional in another. So we took it to talk about it last night. Like I say, there weren't any concerns with it, and I just want to make sure that we get it right. It's already conditional in the codebook, but I would like to have it changed to permitted. And we believe that exists already. I don't know if you remember, but I think we, you know, that was one of those late nights, morning, I talked about it yesterday. That was a kind of a famous meeting.
I remember that meeting well.
I do.
The part that I was there for.
I don't remember actually, but.
It was, I do, it was, you guys discussed it at great length.
I didn't.
And I can see where it got mixed up, because there were all these distinctions being made between length of trailers, size of trucks, locations, what's a garage, what's a repair, what's a refurbishing versus a repair. You guys went through all of that, and then you went insane. Now you're recovered. Thank you.
But they did agree to have it permitted.
Oh, I have no idea. I just know that it was very confusing. But the whole idea of this kind of a statute is, this kind of an ordinance is, it needs to change as your community changes, develops, and there's no doubt that your community, like every other one in the country, has gone through a tremendous upheaval economically in the last year. So everything's different.
What's the harm in leaving it as conditional if it is conditional? What would be the harm in that? Just that they would have to come back every year and get?
No, they wouldn't have to come back every year. Our conditional use ordinance reads that, you know, you get it in perpetuity. The problem with the conditional use, I think there's a couple of issues. Number one, I think that, especially in the case of truck and, truck and tractor and trailer repair, if you read what our light industrial district is supposed to look like, it says right on there that our trucking, or that our light industrial district will have truck terminals and repair. Well, that's exactly what this is, and I don't know why it would be conditional. I guess the harm for me is, I don't know why we would question that use in a light industrial. I believe it to fit perfectly. So I mean, if, I mean, that's what I would say. I don't know that it would, I don't, I don't know that it would harm to be permitted.
The only reason I could think that it would be is because I know that in our city, we've got residential and light industrial side by side, and I don't know if that was a concern on that, and.
Well, I will tell you that, you know, we just had a conditional use last night for trailer repair in that, next, right to where you're talking about, and there was zero people that showed up, and that was after we sent out letters and put signs up and.
But that's the only, that's the only thing I could think of, is maybe that we were afraid that if it was a problem, you know, we could kind of protect the citizens, that's, that's the only thing that I could think, the only reason I could think of.
Well, I can see your concern. I really don't think there's a big concern with this one. I think it's a fairly, you know, I think when you talk about trailer repair and truck and tractor repair, it's gonna be held inside, you know, it's gonna be in shops. I don't see it as a big concern.
You, I don't know if you can really hold someone to that, though. If it's allowed in light industrial, I don't think, I don't think you can actually legally, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you can legally hold someone to, you have to do this inside, you have to do this, unless you have an ordinance for it, which I'm not sure we do.
Well.
And that, that's my, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just.
I know that, Keith, I understand that. I'm just saying that, I guess, I'm not saying somebody might want to work on the semi-truck outside at some point in their life. I understand that. All I'm saying is that for the most part, I think that would be something that would be done inside a shop, that's all. But that does depend on how you just define the use itself. Mike, for all I know, the use is described in the code as inside work. That's a simple stroke of a pen as well. You know, you can, if you want to say they've got to, you know, make it smell like coconut lime verbena, you can, with just writing it into the ordinance.
Yeah.
In other words, if you want to say trailer park needs to be inside, just say that. Okay. We can. It doesn't have to be a condition for conditional use, it can be the rule if that's what you want it to be.
So, for example, for light industrial, it should contain a permitted use indoor truck and tractor repair, is that what you're saying? Revise this ordinance to say indoor.
I would be okay with that. It may already say that in the code itself right now. Trailer repair may already be described as the indoor repairing of trailers, or certain footage or something like that. It's a very complex ordinance, I do know that. Yes. Or you could put inside right there, if you want to. That'd be just as easy, either one.
Would that be okay, Mike?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. We could put inside truck and tractor repair and inside trailer repair, you bet.
And in that way, I guess for me, if there is, and I'm not talking about any, you know, any specific piece of land, but if there is an industrial piece of land that's by a residential neighborhood, you're not, you know, and I'm fine with that, as long as the residents are protected.
Sure.
Some way, and that was my only concern.
Sure.
You know, Mike, on the, on the other side of this is the miniature golf. You know, I'm, I'm looking at this, and I think I can see what the planning commission is talking about with a buffer zone. Probably concerned with things like lights and golf balls flying into residences and items like that.
Well, that, you, just so, just so you know, we do have buffers that you have to put up if you're going between a retail office and a residential already. So we wouldn't be back to back, there would be, there's a landscape buffer that would be required. Many cases, there's a privacy fence that has to go up, and those are all reviewed in the large-scale development as well. They would look at the lights, and those would all have to be approved in the large-scale development.
That's already zoned light industrial over there, isn't it?
Where's that? The truck and tractor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so what other things could go into light industrial that could be even more offensive?
Um.
You know, we're talking light industrial here, and I think when you consider a tractor or trailer repair business, it's not gonna be a lot worse than some of the other things that might go into a light industrial area. And you gotta consider that Lowell is a trucking community. I think that was your argument.
It was.
Several years ago, that here we are making all this trucking, supporting groups, conditional use. So I can go back to that argument again, that we have light industrial, they're gonna locate in a light industrial area, it should be permitted use.
I will also argue, though, that Lowell is also a nice community with a lot of people that live here, and we just, we just, my opinion is, I know our past has been trucking, and our future's gonna be trucking, but at the same time, I think there are areas that are light industrial that are really close to residential neighborhoods, and, you know, I just think that if we can protect those individuals and the citizens that live in those areas, you're right, they could put, I know at one point, an asphalt plant, I think, was listed in light, or I admit that was heavy industrial, I'm not sure.
It was, it was industrial too, and, you know, I think one of the, one of the good things that did come out of the zoning ordinance in 2006 was that we did get rid of the heavy industrial, and, you know, so we don't have the things like asphalt plants that, to worry about, but.
I'll argue this one, too. When you have a business that wants to locate in Lowell, and you give them conditional use only, it immediately sets them out with a handicap. And that is, that if they choose to sell their business, they've got to come once again and ask for permission to continue running their business. It's not attractive to a buyer to know that he's got to come to the planning commission to continue running a business that he's gonna spend big money on. I also believe, and you'd need to go back and look in your, look at the old minutes or look at the old tape, and see where it actually ended up, if it was conditional or if it was permitted.
I hadn't gotten back to, I've researched it some, as Tom said, it got real confusing. It wasn't actually in the minutes what it changed to that I found, you know, and that's why I thought it would be smarter to go ahead and clean it up tonight than to, you know, so that we're for sure.
If we approve this tonight, it's gonna be permitted. I mean, the truck and tractor repair will be permitted in light industrial.
Just be inside.
Yeah. And if someone wants to put an outdoor facility, then we can, we can look at that. But this way, I would like to amend the ordinance to revise that from truck and tractor repair to indoor truck and tractor repair, and from trailer repair to indoor trailer repair.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, this is, this is, I know it's on an ordinance form on the memo, but this is an ordinance, so to be, were you just, was that just a vote on the amendment one?
Just a vote to amend it, yes.
Any other questions regarding the ordinance?
I'm just, I'm just kind of hung up here on the miniature golf, since it was recommended for conditional use. Kind of backing this back and forth. Why is the, what is the difference between the opinions?
Well, one opinion says that it should be permitted, and the other says it should be conditional. It's good. I think, I think in the end, it comes down to, you know.
Control?
Yeah, I think it comes down to control. And, you know, sometimes I think planning commission, planning commissions have the tendency to not want to give up that control. And when you put that permitted in there, it's easy to talk about. And when you put that permitted in there, it's easy to talk about what ifs, you know? If ifs and buts were candy and nuts, we'd all have a good Christmas. I mean, you could spend all day talking about what if this happened, or if that happened. But I, I like to think that our large-scale development ordinance, and that our, our staff, staff review is, is strict enough, and it goes through the tech review, and goes through the planning commission when they build it. I like to think that those are such that we can catch things that would have virtually affect a neighborhood. And I think there's a misconception that a conditional use is always the way you can do that. I think you can do that a lot of times just by using our, our code, our building code, our street standards, our, you know, and our, and our buffer standards. I mean, they recognized that there's going to be neighborhoods that are going to be next to light industrial. They're going to be next to the retail office, neighborhood office. And so, in those scenarios, we've come up with buffers that have to be put up, landscape buffers, and we spell those out and what those have to be. You know, I, I, I guess that the, the biggest difference in the opinion would just be that, that, you know, the staff, the city, you know, as we've looked at it and looked through it, we feel comfortable that if you put a miniature golf course in retail office, we feel like we can control it with the large-scale development. And we feel that that gives, is less, it puts less on a, on a developer. And I'll also say, you know, like anything, this has been, it has been brought up because we have a miniature golf course that's looking to come here. Well, just looking at it practically, this is a 36-hole miniature golf course that's put in. I really couldn't see another miniature golf course coming to Lowell with that here. So, I think your chances of really seeing another one in retail office is pretty slim. So, so those are just some of the arguments I have.
Michael, what about fast lanes? Are they conditional use?
They are not. They are not. They were accepted as a sports complex because of all of the different activities inside, and also bowling and go-karts are a permitted use in our...
Are we in kind of a, a bad position to explain this, why this fellow should be conditional use when right next door it isn't a conditional use? We're trying to develop a city...
That's right.
...within areas. We, we've worked on that land use plan for several days or months to try to get this stuff grouped. And if we go in there now and start conditional use in it, it kind of defeats the purpose.
Yeah. You know, I, I like to think of, of fast lanes as an anchor in that area. And now, the miniature golf is, is coming in, and it, it's going to be kind of a junior anchor, if you will, and it's going to bring people to that area. And hopefully, then, it will bring things that are along those same lines with it. And, and, and I think that, that if, if you read the description of, of retail office, that's one of the things that they talk about, are anchors, and, and wanting to encourage that. You know, they talk more about it as in stores, but this gives us a real good chance at starting, starting an entertainment district in town. And it's, to me, is very exciting, you know? As a country, we're in a recession, and, and yet in Lowell, we have, you know, we have some opportunities and some things coming here. So, I think we have to be, we have to be diligent in looking at those.
Sounds great.
I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on third and final reading by title only.
So moved.
Jerry?
Jerry.
Second?
Yeah, Jerry.
Second?
Yes, Jerry.
Roll call, please.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the City of Lowell Land Development Code Schedule of Uses. Any questions, continuance? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
This will be ordinance number 870.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt the Section 125 Cafeteria Plan for the City of Lowell, Arkansas for May 1, 2010 through April 30, 2011.
This is our annual resolution, and this allows insurance costs to be deducted before taxes. It saves the employees and the city money on payroll taxes. We have to do this once a year, so it's like housekeeping. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
This will be resolution number 10-04.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to request that the appropriate, appropriate... distribution of taxes are prescribed in Arkansas State Law 26-79 and 104. Be amended to pay municipalities 100% of the taxes collected from the City of Lowell, Arkansas.
If, if you all are anything like me, which I would never accuse anybody of being, you had to go up and look this up and figure out what this state law is. And with the exception of Eric Hauselman, he's the only person I knew that could, could throw those numbers out. Okay, Tom. But, but anyway, what this is, is this is a, is a law that goes back to, pretty close to the turn of the century. And it, it says that the county, counties would be allowed to collect up to two mills of, three mills, actually, three mills towards a road tax. And under that law, it gave 50% of that money to the city, where the money's collected, and 50% to the county. That's inside the city limits. Of course, outside the city limits, the county would get 100% of that money. Well, about three years ago, we started looking at our, our fact that we only got 50%, because there were some state laws that were passed that gave different cities different amounts. For instance, Rogers, Siloam Springs, and Bentonville in Benton County get 90% of their money. The other communities in Benton County get 50%. And it, the case, the Benton County actually sued those three towns and said, hey, we want, we, we think they should only get 50%. And that this is specialized legislation, and they had a brilliant young lawyer that took it all the way to the Arkansas Supreme Court, and Tom was able to win for those three cities. So, they still have their, you, you represent just one, but they were able to keep their 90%. But we wrote a bill that we had filed the last legislative cycle that would have given Lowell 90%. And that bill was written, and it was engrossed, and it went to the committee, and it died, because nobody brought it up out of the committee, which is an unusual. But our county judge saw that that was, that we were trying to do that, and he realized that he had control over those mills that are collected. So, he went back and he said, you know, I only get a certain percent of those mills that go to the road tax from those cities. So, if I, if I lower that amount, and I actually put that tax, and I, I can raise another tax, it'll come out even, and all I'm doing is taking money away from the cities, but I can keep the same amount in my general fund. And that's what he did this year. And it's costing our city between, probably between $25,000 and $50,000 a year. So, we looked at this, and we've been talking to other communities, and we've been talking to several people, and we said, you know, if, if we're collecting a road tax, and we should, in, in our city limits, we should get 100% of that money. It shouldn't go half to the county, because it's not like the county comes and says, hey, we're going to help you maintain your roads. It's, it, it needs to stay here so that we have more money to take care of our roads. It's not raising the tax. In fact, we would probably be able to lower it and the mills, if we had control of it, and take much more money in than what we're taking now. So, what we're proposing is, we're asking to pass this resolution, and then we want this, we'll send this resolution to the Arkansas Municipal League. And we want this to be on their legislative agenda for 2011. And, and that's what, you'll be the first council in Arkansas that'll pass it, and then we'll start going to other communities, and we'll start asking them to do the same thing. You timed that perfectly, just near the end of the...
And, and section two, this is only giving us the authority to raise road tax. We're not actually raising taxes at all.
We're not raising taxes. What that says is that it gives us control over the three-mill road, road tax. And if we, if we wanted to raise it to three mills, we could. Right now, currently, the judge has lowered it to 1.8 mills. So, it would be, that would be another decision. We're not asking to raise taxes. We're just asking that, you know, taxation without representation is kind of what's happened here, where these guys, you know, the, the people, the justices of the peace, they, they aren't accountable to city governments.
In fact, we could reduce our three mills to one and a half and have the same amount of money and, and protect our, our citizens. We cut their taxes by one and a half mills and have the same amount of money that we have today.
That's correct.
You said you talked to some other communities. Are they going to do the same thing?
I'm, I'm hoping so, yes. I mean, I've got, I've talked to a couple of, of the small-town mayors, and they seem to be appreciative. They, they kind of like it. Everybody was a little bit taken aback when the mills were lowered, you know? And, and it is a hard thing. I mean, it, it's, it's hard for us, but you put yourself in a situation of a town like Decatur, that maybe has a, a road budget of $50,000 completely, and they don't have equipment, and they don't have personnel to really go out and fix those roads. And they were depending on the county who got 50% of their road money to come and help them take care of their roads. Well, it doesn't happen. And so, it's just money they lose and money they aren't able to put to their citizens.
Is this specific to Benton County, or...
No, this will be statewide, statewide.
I, I realize it'd be statewide, but what are the mills like in other counties?
You know, it, it varies all over the place. And one, one of the most fascinating documents that I saw on this was how many different towns, how, the, the rhyme and reason and the amount that are collected, different counties is all over the board. You know, there are towns, there, there's a town called Arkansas City that they thought at one point was going to be a very large town, and they gave them 75% cut years ago. And, you know, and, and so, and nobody knows why. That's the other thing. It's, the reasoning behind why some communities got their percentages changed and others didn't, nobody really knows. And, and the mills, it is, it is all over the place. Some, some counties, you know, have three, three mills. Some, like our county, hovers around 1.8. So, it just depends. So...
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
This will be resolution number 10-05.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding sewer hookup policies in the City of Lowell. Yes.
Y'all may recall that you talked about this at some length a couple of meetings ago, and it got pulled, and it's been discussed as to what really was the message. What were you trying to do? What was the administration trying to do, the staff? And what do we need to do? And if you recall, Mayor discussed with you statistically what's going to happen if we don't get more hookups in the city with regard to the loan and our obligations. The idea was to get the word out that we'll be doing as many hookups as we can. Now, you have the power to hook up anyone within 300 feet. That's state law. It's also given to us via local ordinance. It looked in that ordinance like maybe you were limiting yourselves to only hooking somebody up if the property changed hands. And I don't think that's what you wanted to do. Maybe you do, but with this, with this, this resolution, you already, since you already have the power to do it to everyone right now, today, anyone within 300 feet could be made to hook up. What this does is sort of put folks on notice that you need to be hooked up as quickly as possible, but here are the folks that we're targeting. You know, first of all, where property changes hands, and where, of course, systems fail and such. Everyone already knows that. So, it's more of a statement of policy. It is good for the city to let people know kind of what the city is thinking, what they're concentrating on, so you don't get surprised. So, if someone knocks at your door and say, heard you're selling or closing, say you need to go ahead and hook up to city sewer. So, that's what this announcement is. It's an announcement of policy, and it may address all of the concerns, I hope it does, that you had at that meeting when you looked at it before.
So, this basically clarifies what we already can do.
More than that, Keith, it also announces, you know, we, we, we've had this power. You may not know that, because we haven't been using it as, let's say, aggressively. But this is putting you on notice that, so you won't have to come back and say, hey, no one ever did this before. I've been here 25 years, you know? Or, you know, you've had the sewer in for five years. Why didn't you ever do this before? This is sort of making sure that people know why we're in the business of hooking people up.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
This will be resolution number 10-06.
Next item on the agenda is a review of the 2008 audit and action relating to each finding and recommendation.
Do you have any questions on this? On number two? Mm-hmm. It says you are required to make a list of payables and receivables in the future. And that's for end of the year only, right? That's what we want. For end of the year? Yeah, that's at the end of the year. What that is, is receipts and, and payments that you make, for instance, in January, February, that was actually incurred in December or the year previous. So what we have to do is make those lists for the receipts and the accounts payable. But only that time of the year? Right, at the end of the year and then you make, then they, I guess the, the auditors will do a journal entry on their own report and they will add and subtract that off from what you, you have. And then they will also then subtract the receipts back out from the previous year and the, and the payables add them back in from the previous year. So they will make two journal entries or if they make one, it will take care of the year previous and the next year. So it's kind of, it's just kind of mixed up and that's the way that it's called accrual accounting and that's the way the state wants it. And our system is cash basis. And so our cash basis shows us exactly what's in our accounts at the end of the month, at the end of the year, and they just want to see the accrual of what came in the, in the next year.
Any other questions?
Is there really anything the council needs to really take action on?
We don't need to vote.
We don't have to take action. We have to, what we do have to.
But we do have to explain what both of the findings are and what our remedies are.
Right.
And I have to make, I have to hear that so I can make note in the minutes.
So the remedy in that is we do make those lists and we started this year for '09. We've already done those, of course, and given them to the auditors and the auditors are here already examining '09. The finding number one, that's the one we get all the time every year. It's the deposits handling cash money. The state has certain laws and we have three people and we don't have enough to do it the way the state wants. And so it's my understanding Little Rock gets written up for the same thing because they don't have enough people. We'd have to hire a lot of people to be on staff to do it the way the state says. And they'd be sitting around waiting until we got a check in or cash in. So is, are you, is that all you need? Okay.
Stacy, she wanted to make a statement and she didn't realize we started at 6 o'clock. Come on up now, please.
I just wanted to quickly do my museum report for you all. I'm Casey Cuth, again, from the museum. We had our Easter egg hunt on Saturday. It was a huge success. We had about 400 kids hunting for eggs, about 20 volunteers, stuffed eggs. Every single egg had some type of treat in it, either candy or a little ticket for, for another prize. It was, it was great. All our volunteers were wonderful. At the event, we had live demonstrations of home crafts, crocheting, quilting, cross-stitching, weaving, and knitting. And so as people went through the museum, they were able to ask questions and watch those things going on. The Breyer's Ice Cream Man handed out tons of ice cream. The Easter Bunny was there for pictures with kids. Debbie Guthrie from Hope Distributors of Lowell donated all the candy. So great thanks to her. Hope Distributors is a warehouse that stocks local food banks and that's, that's here in Lowell. And so that was, that was a great help to us. And Walmart also donated prizes for the kids. Our next event, of course, is Mud Town Days, huge event. I know that all of you will be volunteering and involved in that. We have our car show and our country store, so if any of you are interested in being involved, that's 20, June 25th and 26th. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't know you start at 6:00.
Thank you, Stacy. I have an announcement. Sherry Mead, who's the Lowell National Day of Prayer Coordinator, was in this week and would like to make sure that everybody is invited to the fourth, Lowell's Fourth National Day of Prayer. It will be at 7:00 a.m., May the 6th, in the council chambers and donuts and coffee will Any council members have any comments?
What time was that?
Seven. Seven. If there's no comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If no objections, the meeting is adjourned.